Communication and Recognitions. I do have something from Candace, so I'll read that first if nobody minds, and then anyone else who has some recognitions can jump on in. I am not yet able to participate in meetings even virtually, but wanted to acknowledge three things during the recognitions on the agenda. First is that the last event I attended prior to school closing was the High School Coffee House. I love Coffee House because it feels embodies the best aspects of the high school, and it is student-led, with the unwavering support of Mr. Stanley and Ms. Gottlieb, and it demonstrates growth over time as students take risks to put their best sleeves on the line. While there is great diversity in the range of talent, ability, and expression of self, there's an atmosphere of unfashed acceptance and warmth. This event is not about popularity and embodies more inclusion, acceptance, or tolerance, but a celebration of students' raw and true selves, with a mix of students who may rarely see one another in classes or social circles. I encourage everyone to attend the virtual Coffee House on May 15th. Not sure, the virtual, I suppose, to see the scale and scope of talent and passion and this platform that allows students to develop their best formative adult selves. Switching gears, I'd like to acknowledge the leadership that has allowed the district to transform itself to a distant learning model within a number of weeks. I know the transition was painful for teachers who encountered a steep learning curve and new technology, and for students in losing the personal connection of daily interaction. There is no way for distance learning to replace face-to-face learning, but I credit the curriculum team for developing models of instruction that they have shared freely with my district and several others across the country. I want to congratulate the seniors and their very impressive list of college acceptances. It may be that I've paid closer attention over the last few years as my children have become college age, but it seems acceptances have been more diverse in recent years, as well as more selective. At the same time, in recognizing that higher education is not the right fit for all students, I'm also impressed by the development of strong community partnerships that provide solid pathways into trade and broader range of options for students who wish to pursue alternative pathways. Just like Coffee House, we are learning that success is defined in many ways. More importantly, it's not measured by the name of the next institution or organization, but by the integrity and adaptability of our graduates bring to them as they enter the world that is more chaotic and uncertain than we have ever known it to be. I'm so proud of the senior class who I met in kindergarten during their first year in Stonington. I credit their metamorphosis, not just to the endless support and sacrifice on the part of their families, but to a district that works to intentionally support the development of the whole child. The pandemic has reinforced for me the idea that success cannot be measured solely by the sum of one's test scores, which are important in certain contexts, but by the way, very but by the way, very good in ours. However, test scores are meaningless if we are not fostering the ability to think critically and act with compassion. On a more related note, I'm in favor of dropping the completion of the senior project as a graduation requirement. I am biased on this topic as a parent of three seniors. In light of the changes they have been abruptly forced to accept, the sacrifices they will make in terms of rites of passage, and the face of going on ongoing academic work. I think we owe them any breaks we can give them. They are learning lessons through COVID-19 that are critical to understanding who they are, what they are made of, what they stand for, and how they may contribute to the greater good than most, if not any senior project can provide. Finally, I want to offer thanks on behalf of myself and my family to the outpouring of support through the initial phases of my surgery and treatment. It is humbling to experience to receive support in the form of cards, emails, flowers, pink ribbons on track at track meets and meals. These have come from members of the board, administrators, and teachers, and they have been invaluable. They are more than I deserve, but I am truly grateful. I have been very fortunate in navigating my treatment and healing so far, but am not yet able to attend even virtual meetings. During this time of personal and collective crisis, I would like to express my deepest gratitude for the never-ending forward press that the district employs to ensure the well-being and success of every student. The collective efforts of administrators, faculty, and staff make an immeasurable impact on how students and families weather this experience and come out stronger because of it. All my best, Candace. On that note, that was very nice of her to send that message along, and we send our thoughts to all of the Andersons. Is there anyone else who has any communications or recognitions?
I'd like to recognize all of our employee groups, but in particular, our food service workers. Every morning, they're out there serving food. Becky this afternoon told me that tomorrow they'll deliver 1,500 meals to 250 students and families for the weekend. I had the opportunity to drive through the line the other day and thank them. If anybody's out and about in the morning, they would certainly appreciate that. I'd also like to thank Peter and our custodian maintenance crew. They are disinfecting not only our buildings, as you know, but all of the town buildings, the fire buildings, and they're even doing a building over in Westerly, the ambulance station over there, and the water department, I think. Our secretaries are working from home. Our teachers are doing an amazing job. We'll talk about that later. Our paras have all been in service. Everybody's doing their job beyond their call of duty, and they all need to be recognized, so I'd like to thank them.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Riley. Any other recognitions? Okay, moving on to comments from citizens. We had one comment sent in to the email, and that was from Earl Walters, 12 Marlin Drive, Pocatuck. And his comment, which was actually more of a question, "Do you plan to reopen the Stonington school system after May 20th?" And we don't usually respond to comments from citizens, but I did ask that. We address that during when we're talking about the distant learning or in the superintendent's role. Next item is the consent agenda. I do need a motion to approve. If there's any questions, we can remove that item for discussion.
Don't move. Craig Esposito, seconded by Farouk Rajab.
Okay. And I'll ask for a roll call, though, a yea or nay. Craig Esposito?
Aye.
Jack Morehouse?
Yea.
Alisa Morrison?
Aye.
Farouk Rajab?
Yea.
Heidi Simmons?
Yea.
And Alex Garvey, yea. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools.
I put two items down here, personnel and also negotiations. I mentioned what our personnel are up to these days, our different departments that are doing a great job out in our, in our community. I did want the board to know that per the governor's orders, we are keeping all of our regular employees employed, and all of them are doing some kind of job. We had a couple of questions with a few people, such as our hall monitors, but we're having them do certain kinds of help, help with teachers and help with some other things at the schools. So our paras, our nurses, our food service, our maintenance, our secretaries, our teachers, our support staff, everyone is fully employed, and we're paying our salaries just as we should be, and they're doing a great job. Negotiations, I wanted to mention that we should be in the middle of negotiations with our four classified groups. We also have contracts with the non-represented groups coming up towards the end of this year. I've been in touch. I know Craig and Alexa have also. We talked a little bit about negotiations, and we're working with our attorney, Nick Rello, on how best to accomplish the negotiations when we can't really meet with our, with our groups. So we don't have any, any final recommendations on that. It's important for us to find out. Get our budget approved by the Board of Finance on the next week, and then we'll look to see where we are with negotiations. But I didn't want the board to forget that that is an obligation, that we have to work on that. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of the graduation requirement. And so, Mark, if you want to join in on that.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Due to the current educational environment, St. John High School requests a waiver for the 2019-2020 school year for the senior project graduation requirement. And he went into detail, which I think everybody has seen. Did anyone have any questions for Dr. Riley or for Mr. Fries? My question is, is this mandated by the state? If so, have they released that mandate?
At this point, it is not mandated by the state.
Okay.
This was our local, this was our local requirement.
Okay. I do know also there have been mixed feelings on both sides. The, those students who have already completed their project would like to be able to present their project. Would there be a way maybe to, maybe not make it required, but they could still present it somehow? Or maybe have it used to substitute another project or grade in a class? Or would that be any kind of option?
I think we can entertain that. I don't, I don't see any problem with that at all. I know there were, I don't know if there was a lot of people, but I know there were some people that were able to get their hours done and that it was a endeavor that was very meaningful to them. So we would absolutely entertain any, any kind of platform for them to use.
Okay. Dr. Riley, do we need to, we need a vote on this, correct?
Yes, we do. We need you to waive that graduation requirement for the 2019-20 school year.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion. I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Farouk.
No, it's okay, Jack.
Okay, I'll make a motion to waive the requirement.
Do we have a s-
For, for the senior project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And a discussion, any discussion on the motion?
I would, I would ask Jack if you would just make it for the 1920 school year only.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's make it, want me to start from the beginning? I make a motion to waive the senior project for the 2000, for this year's graduating class.
Thank you.
Yeah, that 2020.
Right. And Farouk, I assume you second that?
I, I do, yes.
And I guess discussion, my only question was, and Mark, thank you for helping to answer that. You'll entertain having those who would like to still present it, present it. And I don't know if you would entertain, perhaps if it applies to a class that they're taking, maybe it can be in lieu of another assignment or something.
Absolutely, we could entertain that.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I will go through the roll call. Craig Esposito?
Aye.
Jack Morehouse?
Aye.
Alisa Morrison?
Aye.
Farouk Rajab?
Aye.
Heidi Simmons?
Aye.
And Alexa Garvey, aye. Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is the update on distant learning.
Yes, I'd like to just let the board know where we are with these. I mentioned again a few of the different employee groups that are supporting this. I must commend our teachers for doing an amazing job, going from zero to 100 in just a few days before the, before the spring break. We are running into a few issues with, there's some questions. I know that both Mark and Tim at the middle of high school, they're working on issues with, with grading. They're also working on issues with their, with their teaching staff, on the timing of when some assignments are due, and also the amount of work that is required. So they're working with their teach, those are some things that have come up. Again, this is new to us. We had nine days of instruction prior to spring break and only a few days this week, so there's a lot to be, to be worked on. But they're, they're addressing the issues that have come forward. The, the question from the public comment about May 20th. Connecticut seems to be slower in making determinations as far as the ending dates than some other states. Either, I think just today or yesterday, Rhode Island decided to hold off school throughout, through the end of the school year. New York and Massachusetts have also done that. We are still, by the governor's decree, closed through May 20th. It appears that we may not open on May 20th or May 21st, but we don't legally know that yet. So we're going to be planning for both scenarios. It seems that that wouldn't happen. We've been given some unofficial word from the state that we should plan summer school, summer, any kind of summer instructional programs in an online environment like we are now on a distance learning, but they have not extended the official ending date past May 20th yet. I would like you to know that our, our teachers and our curriculum specialists have done a really, truly amazing job. We've had districts around the state asking for our plans. We've actually had some districts in other states that have called me and asked for copies of what we're doing. It's really, it's really something special. We should be very, very, very proud of. And the last thing I'd like to mention is we are working on possibilities for graduation. I met with the other superintendents in our region today. I know Mark's been talking to other high school principals. There are lots of ideas out there for celebrating the accomplishments of our seniors, and we'll be looking at all those different kinds of options and talking to the board, letting you know probably at our next meeting what our, what our options and our plans are. But it's something we certainly want to celebrate, the accomplishments and the successes of our students, and we will be doing that. It may be a little different this year, but we will be having graduation ceremonies for our, for our students. And those were the main, the main ideas with the distance learning. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Alisa?
Yep.
When you said summer school, you said you were looking at summer school and being, doing that distance, or you're not talking about mandatory summer school? That's for summer school kids that would normally be doing summer school.
That's correct.
Okay. The state's not talking about any kind of very summer school ketchup thing?
I haven't heard that yet. I think that may be options up to local districts if they want to afford that. There has been nothing-
I was just wondering. It's not, it's, it's been, I haven't heard that from any other state. I was just wondering if it's something that was in the wind somewhere.
I think that the comment really had to do with, if you're going to have summer school, you should be planning on a distance learning type of summer.
So what we normally offer?
Correct.
For summer school. So have you started looking at, at how we would do that?
No, we haven't. It would be similar to what we're doing right now, but we haven't. We just heard that like yesterday, so.
Okay. And you haven't dealt with that yet?
Would it be possible, and perhaps I should have asked this before, if each of the principals could just give a little, what they think is going really well and what they're addressing or trying to improve upon? Or perhaps this is something they could provide to us at a later, during the week sometime?
Why don't we do it that way? We'll, we'll help them prepare something. We meet, we were meeting every day, all the principals in the cabinet. We did meet today, and the first agenda item is to do around Robin, something like what's going well and what questions they have. We'd be certainly happy to provide that to the board. I would, I would suggest that we do that in the next few days. We'll record something and then send it out to the board so you can see the, see the principals in action. We give them a chance to, to think about what, what's important and what some of the concerns are and some of the successes.
That would be great. And then perhaps if some members of the board have specific questions, maybe you could email those along and so that those administrators could maybe address those a little bit more detail.
Yes, send those to me, and we'll be happy to address those.
And Ally, I think you had some questions or some, some helpful input from the student point of view?
Okay, well, just from a student point of view, I know that I've been talking with some of my fellow classmates, and just one of the biggest things that we felt was important to communicate is that we feel that the workload right now definitely feels insurmountable. We definitely feel like we have a lot to do. It's definitely, obviously, this is unprecedented territory for all of this, considering that none of us have gone through this before. But the stress of especially being a senior, committing to college, trying to figure out that whole aspect of things, as well as living through a global pandemic. It's definitely been anxiety-inducing, to say the least. And dealing with, definitely, we've had a lot of schoolwork. A lot of that has been very, very difficult to manage. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up was just more of a general concern. I don't necessarily have a problem with this myself, but the privacy concerns that mandatory Zoom classes could cause. And I know that I spoke with Mr. Fries today, and we talked about how those Zoom classes aren't supposed to be mandatory anymore, but I do have a few teachers that are still requiring us to meet on Zoom. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board, that I don't want any student to feel that their privacy or that their home is being invaded by having these mandatory calls face-to-face like this.
Very good point. Could those students perhaps not have the video on and maybe just the audio?
Yeah, they definitely could. I just, I don't know. I don't really know how that would work for them. Like I said, I'm not necessarily in that position, but I just wanted to bring that up if that was a concern for some of the students that we have at Stonington, to just bring that to the attention of the board, because I do think that it was important to address.
Great, thank you. And I'm sure Mark has taken all these, and we'll hear about how all those improvements are, are going on.
Thank you.
And I also-
Oh, thank you.
That we are going to be administering a survey to students and parents and staff about how this is going and what improvements we might be able to make, and that should be coming out probably the middle or end of next week.
Okay, awesome. I definitely think that'll be helpful.
Would there be a way to have a, especially maybe at the high school level, like, almost like an auditorium kind of meeting, where maybe some of the teachers, administrators could, could talk in a presentation? These high schoolers could chime in, whether they type in a message? Kind of like, to have some more of these questions answered and a little bit more of a conversation back and forth? Almost like a town meeting kind of thing? Would that, would something like that be possible? Would that help maybe some of the concerns be aired?
I think that would, I think that would definitely help if they had, if students had just even an outlet, even if it was like a Google Classroom type of thing, where they just had an outlet to address their concerns or ask any questions that they might have.
All right. I'm sure this is helpful for Mr. Fries to hear. Thank you. Keep brainstorming back and forth.
Thank you.
I was able to go in-
This is Heidi?
Yes, Heidi Simmons. And I was able to go online and actually, what? Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Participate in, I chose fourth grade and did a week of what was expected in curriculum, and it was overwhelming. I just, I couldn't believe that the kids were doing this and that the teachers were overseeing it. And I'm in awe of that actually taking place. And I'm hoping, and maybe this isn't the right place to bring it up, maybe we should do it at Teaching and Learning, but I think that we should really consider how we can make distance learning actually a part of a rehearsal during the school year, maybe once a week, that there is a, a practice, sort of like a fire drill, where you, you're right in the classroom so you can help the kids to see what the expectation is with communicating through a computer, just to make them a little bit more comfortable, not sudden jolt that this is the way that they're going to be learning. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can look at that as something to make it more comfortable, both for teachers and for the students. And I, I see the, the platform to be teaching, the church, the teaching and learning discussion.
Sure. I think that's probably a good place to talk about some of the things that probably have been learned through this different approach that continue maybe to be applied in the future. Good idea.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, if I could.
This is Jack Morehouse?
This is Jack Morehouse. I, I'm looking at this from many different directions. I have a high schooler, my wife's a school teacher, obviously. And I think that it's been a real struggle for teachers. I appreciate the fact that Dr. Riley, I think he sent out a letter saying it's okay to struggle with distance learning, because it's been a real struggle for, for many teachers. And I think it translates into a very much different experience for students. So for my high schooler, the, the teachers that she has that are a little bit more proficient with the computer and Google Meets and Zoom and all that kind of stuff, obviously sounding my age here, because this isn't anything I'm comfortable with either. But those, those, those classes seem to move along a little bit easier, and I think she's learning a little bit more. And then some of the teachers that are struggling a little bit, it's, it's a little bit of a different experience. And I know that the ones that are struggling are going to catch up, but it's, I would imagine it's pretty frustrating for, for them. So, and I know they're all trying their very best, and their job is completely transformed. It's a much different experience doing a rehearsal, a, a video, and then a, a video for your class, and then worrying about how it looks and, you know, having the cat jump in front of the screen and having to do it a second time, or having your husband open up the door when you were- So it, it's, it's been a real challenge, and I, and I appreciate all that they're doing. I probably should have mentioned this during recognitions, but I also wanted to thank again Dr. Riley for giving them the opportunity to kind of struggle a little bit and acknowledging that it's okay to struggle, that eventually they'll all become proficient at this. And I, and I take Heidi's comment. I, I think if, if after this, maybe for snow days or for, we, we need some kind of rehearsal. So if we have to go through this again, we're up and running, you know, as close to instantaneously as we can be. So that's my comment.
And also perhaps professional development in distant learning teaching. One of my daughter's professors was mentioning that she's looking forward to teaching her summer class online, because now she's done some research and some reading up on, and it's, it's a different approach. It's, it's a different format and a different layout. And these teachers didn't have that opportunity. It just, this life just didn't allow that to happen. So having had the experience and then maybe doing some professional development in this area, it might be very helpful and for everybody.
Yeah, I have so many questions of how, particularly in the younger grades, how they motivated, how they oversaw, oversaw the children doing what they were supposed to be doing. It's, I, I just don't know how they kept up with the accountability, because many of these parents, of course, of these kids are working. So they are, it's just expected for, for them to interact with a computer and know how to move ahead. And some of these assignments were, had, had a lot of assumptions, and that's, that's why I just will promote the idea of rehearsal, understanding what's expected, and to make it familiar, not only for the students, but for the teachers as well.
All good ideas. Any other questions or comments on the distant learning at, at this time? We'll certainly have another update and look forward to that update from the administrators. I think that will help us a lot. And please forward any of your questions on to Dr. Riley and he, and Mary Ann, and they can forward those on. Okay?
Ally had it.
I want to make one more comment.
Oh, yes, please.
Um, I was just going along the lines of like, we're talking about expectations for students. I think that it's definitely important to note, like, obviously at the younger levels, but especially at the high school level too, where we're taking classes like calculus or biology or AP Calc, like these very, very difficult classes. And when we're talking about expectations, like, I just think it's important to note that we can't have the same expectations for students while we're in school versus when we're out of school, because when all said and done, regardless of, like, the teacher, it really comes down to the student and whether they can teach themselves the material, because the video lessons are helpful, but at the end of the day, it really does fall on us. So I just thought that that was important to bring up, that our expectation- At the end of the day, it really does fall on us, so I just thought that that was important to bring up, that our expectations can't be the same for. Students such as myself when I'm in school and I have the support and the daily structure versus when I'm here.
Ally, that's really important. Do you think that you could just jot that down and send it to the board because. Um, I think that that's a really important consideration about expectations. Um, I, I, and that's another thing that needs to be considered when we're thinking about distance learning. Is, does the expectation change and um, is that uh, is the product a, a different ki- different. Student or different kind of um, understanding, different learning? And I, you know, you guys had to change around with expectation just in about face. So, I really think that's a, a very important point and I'd like that to be some part of the. Teaching and learning consideration and if it came from you, I think that that would be um, really a very valid.
I'll absolutely write that down, send you guys an email with that.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much, Ally.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Onto um, budget discussion for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Yes, attached to this is our uh, some, a summary from the. Finance Facility Subcommittee Meeting that met the other day. Basically, for the, for this current year, the question was what is the estimated ending balance that we can turn back to the town? And you can see by this that we all have a minimum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that's primarily from substitute money, substitute teacher funds that we obviously aren't using. And for uh, spring sports and other club stipends that we're not gonna be using and some other hourly salaries like tutors. Um, it's our expectation as we get closer to the end of the year that this amount could increase as we um. Know more what we need to spend on utilities and some other things, but we're. Very sure that we'll have the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to turn back to the town to help with their uh, tax collection issue. And for the twenty twenty one uh, school year. This was on here in case the Board of Finance had approved what our budget is going to be next year. We can start talking about options for uh, what we need to reduce from our original, what, two and a half or so percent increase. But at this point, we're asked what can we do for cash flow? To help with the fact that there will be fewer tax collections in July, but I've outlined some of the things on this, on the attached memo. That would, should be able to help the town, uh, in addition to their reserve. These are some things that. The Board of Ed or the District can do to help with that uh, pending cash flow issue. So those are the two big issues for this current year and for the cash flow beginning on July first. Be happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to comment on three D where it said the district will attempt. To hold off on hiring any vacancy um, that occurs after July first. What, um, what would a, an actual hiring freeze be like if that, if there are. If there are necessary positions that need to be filled, um, that it's internal so that, that you don't. You're not going out and bringing a whole nother person in, um. And so, I, I think that that would show a good face to say that we are in a. Hiring freeze, at least up until August, wh- when we can see what the. What happens with the taxes because I think that we're gonna find that they're um, that they're gonna be very difficult in, in. Collecting these, this particular, this particular year, so I, what is.
In the budget for next year, we could talk about uh, other, other options. To me, a, a total hiring freeze would, we would lose. If we have a, um, we'll use Ally's example, if we have an AP Calculus teacher and that's the only teacher that can teach that. And they happen to move out of state. And if we decide, let's wait until August or September to hire that person, we won't get the best person. There are certain positions. That we really need to fill as soon as possible. What I'm do, what I'm saying here is if it's, if it's something where we don't have to fill right away, we won't. We'll try to cover it, reprioritize. Redistribute work, but there are some times when um, positions need to be filled as soon as possible.
I would also say we, um. We might wanna wait till after the Board of Finance is April twenty ninth and see what they. Actually do and we'll have a better idea what we have to do in response then too, so that we can hold off. On that until we hear where we are at that point. That'll give us a better idea as well.
Well, this is Alisa. I agree with Craig because I think the Board of Finance is a little bit of a wild card right now.
Well, unfortunately, remember, we can't, you know, we had a, I think at the end it was around a two and a half percent reserve. And we brought that down, our recommendation is a zero increase, uh, not a reserve, an increase, a zero increase. So if the, if the Board of Finance approves a zero increase, we will be talking about how do we do this one point one million dollars. Out of our budget that we have right now, that was presented to you a couple months ago. This is not an easy task, but for us to, and there will be some. Some uh, possible attrition or lack, you know, filling positions, those kinds of things, but there's a lot of options. That you need to consider as a board and my job will be to present those with recommendations to you once we know what the Board of Finance does.
That we will be considering it as a whole too and not piecemeal, so that's probably a better approach from that regard as well.
I agree, we need to know what, what it is we're dealing with and then we'll deal with it. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is update on internal investigation. And um, update on the OCA report. Uh, the update on the OCA report is quick because we heard nothing back from her. After the um, attorney from Smith, um, from Shipman Goodman. Um, emailed her for an update for us and uh, so we're still waiting for a response, uh. It, it's very frustrating. We would have loved to have had this months ago. Unfortunately, the timing of it right now. That office has gotta be dealing with a lot of major, major crises and I guess we have to be understanding of that. But I'm sure she'll get back to us as soon as possible. I do know that it's not holding up our um, investigator. At all, so that's, um, I feel a little bit better about that. Um, and I do have an update and I did email that to you. She provided that in writing.
Right, let, can I just ask something about the OCA? Doesn't this impact on um, Attorney Chinney's um, investigation because. What, if the OCA and, and beginning to sort of um. Lose trust that they're going to come up with very much. Um, it may be this is what she should be doing is covering some of the things that. Egan, Ms. Egan said that she was going to be covering, so I, I, I'm wondering. I know how this impact on um, Attorney Chinney's investigation.
At this time, it's not impacting her investigation. That's the direction that we gave her. I think if we needed to in the future. Because we didn't get an OCA report and needed more of this other information, then we could go back to Attorney Chinney at that time. Right now, that's not in her direction. To, to do those things because as we said, the OCA is going to be providing more of that information as far as. Direction on policy and, and things like that, so at, at this time, it's not impeding on her investigation. She's read all of the um, uh, reports and all the information that we gave and provided to. Um, Attorney Egan and to uh, the day, so. Um, she's had a lot to, to do to this time, so it's certainly at this point not holding, not holding her up at all.
Who, how did Ms. Egan think that um, make the decision that. We really didn't need to have it or want to have it now because we are so overwhelmed by everything else? And that seemed to be sort of an independent thing that she came up with, but.
I have, I have not heard that directly from her. I'd like to hear it in her own words, exactly as she said it. Um, and so when, we'll wait to hear from her. And we have put out the request that we'd like to hear from her and like to know when um, we would be getting her response. Right, I guess we haven't heard because they're in the midst, I'm sure, of some pretty big crises considering um. DCF has probably got their hands full with this current situation.
Sure.
I suspect they were more overwhelmed, it was more about them being overwhelmed.
I, yeah, that's my.
Really worrying about us being overwhelmed.
Especially since we haven't heard back from even that question, so that's, that's my thought. It is frustrating. Um, but I guess since we do have our, this independent investigation going on, we, we, we want this to go forward and completed also, so. Uh, we're not, at least we're not treading water, at least we're heading forward at one end. And I do have the memorandum from Attorney Chinney that gives a, a little bit of her update um, to date. Um, answers some of the questions that people had. Uh, below, I summarize the actions I have taken in commencing the investigation in the above named matter. This is the update on investigation into Timothy Chokis matter. As you know, I had originally planned to conduct interviews of all staff and any witnesses, alleged victims. Or others with relevant information in person and a location in or near Stonington. Unfortunately, the day after Stonington Board of Education voted to retain me to conduct the investigation. Governor Ned Lamont announced a shutdown of school facilities effective immediately. This and other orders prevented me from conducting any face to face interviews. After the Board voted to retain me to conduct the investigation, my firm created a press release concerning the investigation. The link to the press release, which includes my contact information. As well as the questions the Board has set forth as the issues to be investigated, is prominently displayed on the Stonington Public Schools website. I also contacted Joe Wojcicki, the reporter from the New London Day. And asked him to publish the information contained in the press release. An article including all of the relevant information in the press release appeared in the New London Day on March eighteenth, twenty twenty. As it became clear that the statewide shutdown of all nonessential activity would continue for a significant period of time. After consulting with, with me, I decided to commence the interviews of staff members remotely via video conference. I reached out to the sto- superintendent of the Stonington Public Schools, Dr. Riley, to discuss the scheduling of interviews. His office facilitated the meetings via District's Google platform. He asked that the interviews commenced during the week of April sixth. To accommodate the commencement of distant learning in Stonington the previous week. After Riley and his assistant scheduled remote video interviews with the following administrators and staff members. Assistant Superintendent Marion Butler, Superintendent Riley, Athletic Director Brian Monroe, Marone, I'm sorry. Stonington High School Principal Mark Freeze, Special Education Director and Title Nine Coordinator Alison Van Etten. Stonington High School Assistant Principal of Guidance Margot Crowley and Stonington High School Assistant Principal Neil Carland. I am in the process of setting up interviews with School Resource Officer Thomas Page and Arthur Howe, golf coach. The virtual interviews have proceeded without difficulty and can continue. They need not be a barrier to continuing the investigation. I spoke with three individuals who contacted me dedicated through the dedicated email address. One was a former staff member at Stonington High School, one was a former Stonington High School student. And one was an anonymous adult male who stated that he was calling in support of Mr. Chokis. He however, would not provide his name um, during the phone call. To date, no one has contacted me with direct knowledge of any allegation concerning Mr. Chokis' conduct. That he or she shared with any staff member of the Stonington Public Schools and which went unaddressed. I have contacted everyone who has sought to speak with me about this matter. I am hopeful the Board's discussion at this virtual board meeting will serve to remind the community. About ongoing investigation and encourage all individuals with relevant information to contact me. So that, that's her update. So my hope is that, um, because no one. With direct knowledge, as she said, has contacted her, my hope is that at this meeting, getting this word out there again. That the investigation is still ongoing and um, she is still doing interviews that um. Somebody will reach out to her, we'll, we'll put the email address back out in, in front on. In, in the press and make sure people uh, see it, have access to it so that we can. Uh, have these people contact Attorney Chinney. It's a little frustrating to not have that contact.
So you, since you read this out, it now is public knowledge the entire matter. And so, I, I'm hoping that quite a bit of it will be published in the day so people can see. That how we're moving forward and the things that are, are taking place, so um, we don't send it to the day, hopefully.
They. Well, I will provide, I will certainly provide that to the day. Um, I believe they um. That's the purpose of these and I want her to continue to provide these written updates so that we can make sure that everyone's getting the same information out there. Directly from her.
Good.
Were there other, this is Jack Morehouse. Um, when, when we were interviewing different investigators, um, there were some other ideas that were floated. Um, in terms of getting out to students and faculty uh, who may have information. It, it, has she entertained any other ideas besides just, you know, on the website and, and putting something in the newspaper? Like for instance, I'm not saying she should do this, but just as an example and obviously I'm not an investigator. It's not for me to tell her how to do her job. But one of the other investigators had mentioned just having like an eight hundred number posted um, somewhere. Um, I mean, are there any, has she floated any other ideas in terms of reaching out to the public?
She didn't, I think she's found this mode to work very well in the past, however, we're in different times. Um, I'll certainly. Mention that um, suggestion or thought that you had, see if she's tried that in the past. And see what her response is. I think, let's, let's get this out there, try it for a week or so, see if there's any increased response. If not, then a different mode needs to be um, tried to make sure that we've tried every avenue that, that would be successful.
Sure.
I, I think that might be good.
She said that, um, Heidi Simmons, um, she said that she had contacted Joe just, just to get a. To get the letter out, but has she used any of the information that. Um, Mr. Wojcicki had in his newspapers?
She read the articles, I know. I'm sorry, Heidi.
And use those because there seems to be um, a wealth of information there that might help her to. To, to gather leads for investigation, um, that maybe she i- isn't able to, to figure out herself, so. I, I don't know if there is some sort of professional ethic. That she shouldn't take information that um, that Joe Wojcicki gathered. But um, I just didn't see anything about that where I think that those, that could be helpful.
She certainly read all of those articles, um, so that I'm, I'm aware of. Um, I'm, again, like Jack said, I'm not an investigator. Um, I'm not sure to what extent she's used or I'm sure she's. Um, I, I wouldn't want to interpret, but certainly I will uh, put that question. I think someone asked during the interview, actually, also. Um, when we were interviewing her, that question about use of that information. I know she said she likes to get the information directly from the person. So perhaps she reads that, that's there, but she wants to talk directly to, to these people and have them communicate to her.
Joe may not be at liberty to give her those names either, I don't know. That's also, it, it depends on the circumstances under which. He got the information, so. Um, she has contacted him, if I understand, but.
Yes, yeah. And I did uh, email all of you the, the letter and also the um. She's submitted one invoice so far and the invoice itself is very uh, detailed. So I'm not going to run through that here, but that's, I included that as well, but just so uh, everybody's aware. Cost so far is two thousand, two dollars. For, for all of her work so far, to date. Um, so I, I think we'll get the word back out there, get the email out there and um, a week or two. And a week or two, she'll reach out, let me know if she's heard from any more people, just so that we know if this is working. And then perhaps see if there's another, other avenue to, to make sure people have access to her. And if you have other ideas, please let me know, and I can pass them along to her. How does that sound?
That sounds like a plan.
Okay.
You know, I, I just think during these times right now, people are just, they're focused on, you know, going to the grocery store and, you know, getting a mask that fits. And, and I just think it's, it's, it's not a good time, I'm guessing, to do an investigation like this. And I, I'm sure she'll do the best job she can do under circumstances, but.
A lot of these people, I think, that are affected are more your teen, late teen, early 20. So they might actually be easier to schedule. I don't know. It depends on the person.
Yeah, yeah.
At, at the time. They may be busier, they may not be as busy. And I think if she finds from my, my conversation, at this point, she doesn't believe it will interfere with her investigation. She's done so many. I think if she goes along, if she finds that it is, she'll let us know. She's pretty honest and forthcoming. So she's not going to want to do a half, half investigation.
Yeah, and I think that if we, Heidi Simmons, I think if we curtail the investigation for a while and then just reinstitute it like in September, I think that it may lose some of the motivation that was behind it. So I, I, I've really deliberated about that because if we're just treading water, that's money that taxpayers don't need to be spending right now. So I, I want to understand or be convinced that this is really useful at this time. And maybe she can tell us that. And, and maybe I would, if you could entertain that question with her, you say she's really honest. You just say, you know, through other investigations, you've seen how they've gone. And is this seeming that it is not moving at the same kind of pace that other investigations do? And does she think that maybe curtailing it for a while might be a useful strategy or not? I, I, just from her professional viewpoint, I think I'd like to know that.
Right. I did ask her that question directly, ask, actually, because I know we were all anxious to, to get that answer. And that's what she, she said, and she put in that letter. No, at, at this time, it's not impeding.
Yes, I saw that.
At this time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just want a last comment. For me, it's, it's about the process more than anything else. And I just want to, at the end of this, I want to be done with it. I wanted to say we had a, we had a good investigation. And, you know, however it turns out, that's really not really, I think as a board, our main concern should be the process. So that's why I'm focused on the process. Because I just, you know, again, when, when this is, when she, when this comes to fruition and she's completed the process, I want to be done with it, and I'm sure everybody else does though. So I don't want the people from the general public, you know, coming up to the podium saying, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. You know, that, that to me, it just opens up a whole nother can of worms, so.
I agree. And perhaps at what point she believes it's, she's done all she can do. Our question is to her, do you believe this is as thorough as would have been? And due to the situat, is it just due to the situation? Or is this, you know that you have hit the end because that is the end, point blank? I think that's a good, valid question.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Monthly reports. Were there any questions for anybody? Okay. Committee reports. Farouk, did you want to expand any on the Subcommittee Meeting that we held? Or do you think it's already been all addressed?
I believe it's all addressed. I just want to thank Gary Van and everybody else on the team for putting the time.
You're frozen.
To work on this, I spoke to both Mr. Ryan, Tim Ryan, and Danielle about, as a review of the, our meeting with them. And, you know, we, we, we're going to do our best to make sure that we're, we work together cohesively as a team. The, both towards the Finance and the Selectment, overcome the situation. And, you know, we're, we're, we're all on the same, the page that the, whatever, you know, money is not used. And however it works, at the end of the day, that money is going to be earmarked for education. So.
Thank you. Items for future agendas, Subcommittee's Late School Start and Athletic Committee. I think we're going to push those off for a little bit until we have a little bit more normalcy. I think we have a lot, a lot more pressing issues to discuss right now. But once we're all more face-to-face, we can, I think, bring those up more to the forefront. If there's anything else that people have that they'd like to add for future agenda items, please let me know or right now, or if you think of something, please send me an email. Are there any board comments or concerns?
I'll be coming.
Go ahead.
It seems like Jack and I are always on the same. Now, I just want to congratulate Alicia on her appointment and as well as thank Mr. Carland on his service and congratulate him on his retirement.
Thank you, Farouk.
You're welcome, Alicia. We're very excited for you.
I'm honored and can't wait.
Jack, you were going to add something?
Um, yeah, so I just, what do you foresee for the future here in terms of meetings? I mean, are we going to be doing, is it possible to, again, I'm probably going to suggest something that's going to make somebody angry. But if we're 20 feet apart in our room, is that possible? Or that's, I mean, it just seems super awkward for like the general public to be, I don't, I don't know how easy it is for someone to view this meeting. But I'm just curious, is, is this the way it's going to be for a while in terms of meetings? Or, or do you have any idea?
I, I think it is going to be the way until they remove or minimize the social distancing. Unfortunately, because it just takes so many different people in and out, touching things, being in the same room. I know that, I think for the Board of, for the K-12 Building Committee, I know that Rob wanted to have a meeting and have a few people in a room. And Danielle said, no, the only person allowed, would have been loud in the room, would have been him. So it would have been one person. So they're, they're instituting the same thing right now. As soon as we can lessen it, believe me, we will, because it is awkward. It's, it's, by that time, maybe we'll all be used to it. I don't know.
And, and, and just, sorry, this is Farouk. Just to, as a follow-up, I think it's the, the number of people gathering in one place is also an issue beyond the requirement. As, as awkward as this might sound, I actually, during the meeting, I went and I watched it on YouTube live. And it was, it was functioning. I mean, there was a, there was like a 10 seconds delay between we were talking and, or five seconds.
Oh, jeez.
Between us talking and YouTube. It was, it was live on YouTube and functioning well. I know Chris has done a lot of work behind the scene to make that happen, so thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
I was going to say the same thing. Thank you, Chris and Steve. Without you, we all wouldn't be here, so we appreciate that. Ally, thank you for your comments tonight. So good to see your face. Tell all the students, especially the seniors, we really wish them well, and we're here to help them. The whole community is thinking of them, and we'll, we'll get to celebrate you guys soon.
I will. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Any other comments? All right. Thank you. I think for our first large virtual meeting, we all did really well. Thank you, everybody. I greatly appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Alexa.
Thanks. The second?
Second. Heidi Simmons.
Thank you. And I think we're all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, community, for tuning in, and we'll talk soon. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.